Great, thank you. And yeah, so back to that, to close out that last conversation. We do not need any motion in order to move forward with the project as is. If we want to change, that will require a motion, Council Bisco.
I actually wasn't prepared to make a motion, but had two questions in the deliberation category. I wondered first if we could get a copy of that digital presentation. Like I know we have that in paper, but I'd like to be able to have access to that digitally. And then I wondered to the point of the downtown streetscape project as it relates to trees. Form of being a tree city, we're talking about a heritage tree board or program. The council has not been able to ascertain whether the street trees that are part of the downtown streetscape project will be preserved or not. And I'm wondering if you can speak to that part as you are working very specifically with the downtown streetscape project and some of the work. Are you able to comment on that at all?
There's a question for Sam or his team.
So I guess is the question existing street trees that are within the footprint of the new sidewalk area, is that I guess the question?
Well said, thank you for reframing. So yes, the street trees that are in the current, they're in the current along Main Street, for example, there's a fair amount of them. We know that we're bumping out the sidewalks and that's going to change the pedestrian flow on those sidewalks. The question is, will those trees be able to be preserved or will we be removing the trees on Main Street in this process as well?
And I just want to pause. I'm sorry, Council Bisco, but this is outside of the topic that we have, and we have a really long agenda still ahead of us tonight. I don't want to start discussing the streetscape project more generally.
It just, we haven't been able to have any staff been able to provide that, and I know they're working directly with that. It was just a simple question that perhaps they could answer.
I understand that, but why didn't we just ask them that via email? Because that's, that's just not relevant to the tonight's discussion of the bio swell. I'm sorry.
It was a tree conversation, that's why I brought it up.
Okay, I appreciate that, but I'm going to go ahead and table that for now. We can reach out via email and get an answer from through Chris to that question, but.
Mayor, I just, if point of order pleased, I've not been able to get an answer to that question. And that's why I thought perhaps these gentlemen could answer it, they could have already answered it for me.
Okay, I will make sure that question gets back to you via email, but thank you. With that, I am going to make some adjustments to the agenda that we have before us. I'm going to skip the certificates appreciation for now and go to visitors petitions, concert or roof post, do we have any visitors petitions?
We only have the, oops. We only have the written testimony that was submitted by Ronna Foster relative to the bio swell project that was emailed out to all of you before the meeting started. I do not see Ronna on the call anymore, so that I believe was the only thing.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to table the consent agenda until our next meeting and move on to our new business. With that, Chris, we have a discussion of the finance director, the new hire of the finance director.
We do, so just invited Mike to come back on, so we'll give him just a minute here. I believe we've kept the council in the loop on this as we've gone through in our last hire for the finance director, having some health concerns and and issues and having to resign rather suddenly. We're fortunate to be able to reach back out to other top candidates and and Mike expressed interest, we met with him a number of times, we've interviewed him. I don't know, half a dozen additional times and feel very confident and comfortable with Mike coming in as the finance director. We're able to provide the council with his resume, so, so Mike, they've seen that. And just wanted to give the opportunity again, we just went through this here a couple of months ago, but want to give counsel opportunity to ask any questions of Mike and, and then we're looking for a motion to approve his appointment, my appointment of him as the city's finance director moving forward. So with that, Mike, maybe just give a minute intro real quick and then we'll open up for any questions that council members might have for you.
Evening, council and Mr. Mayor. I mean, can everybody, can you hear me? This is a new microphone and everything, I'll make sure it's working right. I'm Mike Mrazinski, currently the finance director for the city of Newport. I'll just give you a quick overview of who I am. I grew up back east, moved here oh, 20, 30 years ago and been working in the government world ever since then. Started with Josephine County, moved to city of Albany and then Newport. So I've been, been well versed in government work. I finished my, I did my education in San Francisco, I love San Francisco, so. That's a quick, quick interviewer or quick review of who I am, living core ballast right now, so. You know, the job's really close, much closer than Newport, so. That's one of the big things that turned me on to, you know, to, to apply for the position, so. I'm hoping for any kind of questions you may have.
Great, thank you. And I'll just jump in with one, Mike, what do you anticipate being the biggest challenge for you in this position?
Trying to figure out what I don't know. Every city's different, I've looked at the financials many, many times, looked at the budget this morning, just to refresh my memory and you know, there's a lot of things that I see that I may know, but I don't know, so. I've done the job for quite a few years, so I understand the position. And it's just learning, learning what who philosophy, you know, who, what Flo- Flometh is going on. That presentation you just did with the nine street is thank you. I've driven that road for seven and a half years and boy, it needs a little bit of improvement and thank you, ODOT. I know how challenging that may be, so I mean, that's the biggest thing in learning my staff, the new staff members. Yeah, and then probably learn the new auditors who they, I know who Grove is, just I've never worked with them before, so. That's the kind of thing on my, you know, that's what I'm thinking, I mean, I just, what do I, what do I don't know right now? So that's the big thing.
Great, thank you, and Council though?
Yeah, hi Mike, yeah, I'm really impressed with your resume, it seems to really fit our the job description as I've seen it for our finance director, we've, we've been very fortunate to have a head of, in Joan Swanson, having a really excellent person guide us and come to rely on her tremendously in terms of our, our financial standing and recommendations and that kind of thing to help us be a strong city. Do you have any particular philosophy or such to, or or kind of yeah, I guess a philosophy of how you would, you, you are, you conduct yourself as a, as a finance director. Nothing I'm hitting it just right, but I don't know if you can kind of get, get what I'm, I'm trying to say, but sort of guiding principles, that kind of thing.
Well, the biggest thing is I'm, I want to make sure I do everything according to the generally accepted accounting principles gap. I follow a lot of the GFOA best practices. I've learned to learn that over the years and one thing, it's, you're fortunate to have somebody that's been there for 26 years. And you know, I've worked five different jobs in the last 26 years, so I've got a little bit of flavor for a lot of different things. So yeah, my, my philosophy is that I want to do the right thing, do it right and make sure my staff understands where I'm coming from. And I work with myself, I like to have a good time with people and so. You know, that's my biggest thing with my staff, but you know. But the biggest thing I want to do is I want to make sure I do everything by gap. I have to follow that and plus generally accepted accounting standards. We call that gas, so there's a lot of, lot of, lot of, lot of things in those, those two words, so two acronyms I should say.
And, and you've worked with, we had the finance and administration committee, you've done that before with, with other.
Yes, I have, I compare that to my audit committee, I mean, but you guys meet on a, on a much more regular fashion than the audit committee. But we, we did have a finance work group the last, oh, we didn't do it this past year, but we did it three years prior to that where we met regularly to look at the finances of the city. So that's, I'm kind of used to that, but like I said, I kind of compared it to our audit committee. We look at, because the audit committee looks at the finances of the city and it's like that's what you do with your finance and administration group.
Right, yeah, and we do meet fairly regularly as, as needed. As items come to us from Chris or from the, from yourself, okay, thank you.
Excellent, with that I'd entertain a motion to approve the city manager's new finance director appointment, Council Dotty.
I wanted to ask Mr. Mrazinski a question. What is your process informing the budget? And how do you incorporate council members into that process or do you?
Well, what, what I usually do, counselor, is I put a budget calendar together and kind of lay out what staff has to do, what city council has, you know, what their steps are and kind of put it into a calendar and follow their, you know, here's what council does and here's what staff does and then this is what the budget committee will do, here's budget training or something like that. So I basically put a budget calendar together to get everybody's, I give that out to everybody to have input, I don't know if you guys have a calendar, I haven't really dug into that. But that's something that I've done for years, it works out perfect and we do a lot of, we pull a lot of council information or meetings into that schedule, like the goal settings, the strategic plans. So you know, we've got the staff, we've already started, I mean, we started in December, basically, so. That, that's the way I go through putting the budget process together.
Thank you.
With that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the city finance, city manager's new finance director appointment, motion made by Council Lehman. Seconded by Council Cosi. All in favor of passing the resolution as stated, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Looks like motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, welcome on board, Mike.
All right, looking forward to it, thanks, Chris, I'll talk to you tomorrow. I am, I gotta go take care of stuff, good night, y'all.
Excellent, thank you all for that. So next on the agenda is the standing committee and representative assignments. So I went ahead and polled everyone about their preferences for council, took that into consideration and made some appointments here, you can see that we have we basically have each counselor has two assignments other than two, which only have one, that's just the math that works out. I see that there's a lot of good work that needs to be done on inclusivity committee and excited to have Councils Andrade, Nielsen and myself working on that. I think that we have some well-rounded out committees recommended in the standing committee. And so are there any comments on that? Counselor Andrade?
I wanted to know why Chair Bisco and I were removed from the public works committee and Counselor Cosi was allowed to remain. Both Chair Bisco and I selected this committee as our first and second preferred assignments respectively. So why would you remove us?
Sure, great question. You were not the, there were others. In fact, it was the most in-demand committee with folks having that their number one. And so, you know, just as a, to be fair to folks, this is how it's worked out.
I would like to point out that all of the other committee chairs remained on the committee they chaired. So why was Chair Bisco the only chair removed from their committee?
I did not take into consideration whether or not they were chair, I think that has no relevance whatsoever.
I think it does.
Appreciate your opinion. And Counsel Bisco?
And Mayor, I just want to clarify for the record that my first choice was in fact Public Works Committee and my fourth choice was the Police Committee and that's where you chose to put me, so. Given all of the alternatives and the considerations that were given and the fact that I am one of the two counselors who are on one committee only. I think it is a statement. I would say that the information that was provided and the work that was done by Public Works Committee was considering the difficulties of barriers provided by staff. I think it was exceptional work and I think that that was represented in the work session this evening as well. So I object to being removed as the chair and being removed from the number one committee that I requested.
I really appreciate the work that you did in the committee. And yeah, you brought, you brought some great information there and this is just, these are my recommendations for how we move forward to do the best work for the city. And I think that you're going to do, bring some great work to the police committee, I'm really looking forward to the input that you're going to have there. And does anyone else have any comments on this topic? Before I go back to Council Andrade? Council Andrade?
So in the municipal code, it says the mayor shall, after, after consultation with and consent of the members affected, appoint the members of the council to the council standing committees. So I don't see how you could, how your, your changing of your removal of Chair Bisco and myself from the Public Works Committee falls within the Flometh Municipal Code.
Counsel Brewer, do you have any concerns about my authority to recommend that we change the councils our committees?
Well, assuming that you've asked people that they've, they've made their request, you've taken those into account and that the council agrees, then I, I think that's what the code calls for.
Great, thank you. Chris?
I'll just note on that point in the, in the memo that I prepared on your behalf, it says on there sorry, that the backup second paragraph here, Mayor Jones presents the following assignments to standing committees and the inclusivity ad hoc committee for county year 2022 and seeks council's consent by way of consensus, so. We are looking for consensus from the city council. If there's not consensus, then the city council can determine if another way is appropriate, so you can take a vote, for example.
If I may, that's not how I, I read it as the individuals affected and the language about approving by consensus is not in the municipal code.
Yeah, and per Jim's conversation just, just now, this is within the purview of the mayor and we can vote.
I understand that you're choosing to use that interpretation.
And we can vote on that. If there's a motion to approve, I can, you know, the, the consent of the, the decision of the council is the decision of the entire council, it has, it's beyond my own powers. So, okay, so the motion on the table to set the standing committees as, as suggested here. Can I get a second? Seconded for motion made by Counsel Cosi, seconded by Counsel Nielsen. All in favor of passing the motion, as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye, all opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Motion carries five to two. So moving forward. Thank you for that, appreciate it. So with that, we have a, the planning commission appointments. And I'm excited to see that we have, well, I'm sad to see that Mr. Boggs is retiring after a long tenure as being, of being on the planning commission. He's, he's completed his four-year term and now we have three applicants that include Michael Hansen, Darlene Rose and Jeff Schminsky. I've asked, or Chris had invited each of those folks to join us tonight. And we asked them to, the following questions so that they could present to us. Please introduce yourself and explain why you're interested in serving on the planning commission and what you believe your appointment would add to the planning commission. We wanted to ask everyone the same question so that there would be no issues with different types of treatment. And so there will, there will not be any follow-up questions from the council on this topic. But we can then vote based on the answers offered. And so I'm just going to repeat the question and then I'm going to go in the order that's presented to us here and with Michael Hansen going first. Darlene Rose second and Jeff Schminsky third. So just to repeat the question and Michael, this is to you, so thank you so much for applying, really appreciate your interest in a serving and the question is, and you've, you have provided this question in advance, so. Please introduce yourself, explain why you're interested in serving on the planning commission and why you believe your appointment would add to the commission.
Well, thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you, Mr. Mayor and the council. And my name is Michael Hansen, I'm recently retired as chief data officer from Oregon State University. And my wife and I have a small commercial vineyard in the Flometh urban growth boundary, so we're very interested in what's going on in Flometh. And if you've ever had, you know, agree at Spindrift or Comptons family wines, you've enjoyed fruits of our labors over here. So what got me interested in the planning commission, my wife and I are very interested in what's going on in Flometh as a lot of people are. And last summer, we were looking around just to try to find out what was going on in Flometh with all the different construction projects and we had little luck in finding things on the web, so my wife picked up the phone and called the planning office and to our surprise, I, I believe it was the planning officer actually answered the phone. And he was very nice, he answered all our questions, it was very helpful. So based on that really positive interaction that I had with their office, I decided to go ahead and apply for this position when I saw it advertised, it's as simple as that. What I would bring to the commission, I, I believe I have a lot of experience, diverse experience across the board. I have 15 to 20 years experience in design development and construction. I worked in a lot of commercial properties and residential subdivisions across the southwest, which were mainly in Santa Fe and Los Alamos, New Mexico. And when I came to Oregon 35 years ago, I worked on projects in Portland, which were high-density apartments and the last big projects I worked on and design development were 1,500 apartment unit complexes surrounding Lake Oswego, so I bring that experience. Granted, it was years ago, but you never forget those things you've learned when you're working with cities and building those large type of projects. In addition to that, I have 30 years experience at Oregon State University in administration and finance, so. I know how government processes work, I know how policy development and implementation work, so I think I can bring some of that to the committee also. And in conclusion, I've been around here for 35 years, as I said, I've lived 20 years in the Flometh area and the urban growth boundaries. And I've seen a lot of changes going on and I'm interested in seeing that those changes direct Flometh to a more sustainable and livable community. And everything I've seen recently have shown me that that is happening, which I'm really pleased to see and what I want to bring is the commitment to help the committee continue that work and making Flometh a better place to live and a community where people say they want to bring their kids and raise them here because it's that type of community. So that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you really very much, Michael, really appreciate that. And we're not going to ask any follow-up questions, but I do have a question for Chris quickly. Chris, can you verify that someone living within the urban growth boundary does qualify as being a potential planning commission member?
Yes, there's a limit to the number, but we're not at that number, so yes, you qualify.
Great, thank you, just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that, so. Thank you, Michael, appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
With that, we will move to Darling Rose. And appreciate you being here with us, Darling. And I will offer the same question to you. And that is please introduce yourself, explain why you're interested in serving on the planning commission. And what you believe your appointment would add to the commission. And I should add that, which aim for doing this within three minutes.
Okay. All right, well, greetings, everyone. My name is Darlene Rose, I've lived in the Flometh area for all but 21 years of my life. Which means I've lived here for a considerable number of years. I have a grandchild in the Floma school system as well as many other family members and friends here. As you can imagine, I am thrilled to be back home after being in Portland for so many years. My application pointed out many parts of my work experience that are pertinent to serving on the planning commission. Also, my background with ODOT and TRIMET, the Public Transportation Agency in Portland, created a strong interest in urban planning. This position is an opportunity to participate in the process of ensuring the future of Floma is an inviting and well-planned environment where all citizens and their families can grow and thrive. That's, that's, that's me.
Excellent, well, thank you so much for that, darling, I really appreciate that. I really appreciate your submitting your application to the planning commission as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, on this topic, we have Jeff Schminsky. Hi Jeff, welcome, appreciate you being here this evening.
Hello, thank you.
I'm going to ask you the same question I've asked of the other two candidates. Please introduce yourself and explain why you're interested in serving on the planning commission and what you believe your appointment would bring to the commission.
Yeah, thank you so much, everyone. I've been living here in Flometh for, since 2009. I have a 10-year-old son that was literally born in the house here in Flometh. I've seen Flometh kind of at its low points and I believe that we are at a crux right now as far as our identity, we don't really have an identity and I think that's something that's really important going forward. And I believe serving on a planning commission is really going to be the driver for that future. I have a great understanding of administrative rules, I've been on a number of board of directors, a number of nonprofits. Developed numerous country companies, I started numerous companies, nonprofits included. I think I have a pretty good idea and pulse of Flometh community itself. I'm a volunteer baseball coach for Flometh youth activities, so I'm already readily involved, but I really want to step it up. And what I bring is someone that really listens and wants to learn, but also has again, an idea or kind of something for the future of Flometh and I'm really hoping to work together with everyone that's done such a great job so far and identify that future and, and make the efforts to go forward and really make Flometh stand out as the wonderful city that it is and the wonderful place that it is to raise a kid as I know firsthand. And a wonderful school district, we can expand, we can include others, we have to do it in a smart, intelligent way and share this wonderful community that we have, so I'm really just looking forward to that and I just thank you all for the opportunity.
Excellent, really appreciate that work, Jeff. Wow, so with that, we have three very enthusiastic and well-qualified candidates. And with that, we are going to need to vote based on some experiences that we had in the past. We are not going to rank the candidates. And what we are going to ask that the counselors do is email of Ruth and Chris with your top two candidates. They will then identify the top two candidates and then we will follow up with an additional vote for the top candidate. And so we are going to pause, email Ruth and Chris with our top two candidates. And in the meantime, I will present the certificates of appreciation for our Flometh volunteers. So you go ahead and allow us that time, I will send out my email and then I will present those. I will present those. Okay. And so wasn't there a couple of minutes to recognize some of our city volunteers that that we prepared certificates of appreciation for? First off, we have Izzy Elliott and Izzy has, is, we're recognizing Izzy for her volunteer service on the Flometh Park Board. Her, she's been serving since Jan-, since January twenty eighteen through December twenty twenty-one. And her term has expired. And so we have this certificate for Izzy and we're going to be recognizing her tonight. We also have a certificate of appreciation for Margie Brown, who served on the budget committee from January twenty nineteen to December of twenty twenty-one. And her term has expired as well. And so we have this certificate of appreciation and thank you so much for your service, Margie. Really appreciate all that you have contributed. We have another certificate of appreciation for another budget committee member, Noel Cummings, who served on the budget committee from January twenty twenty through December twenty twenty-one. We want to thank her for her service. Thank you, Noel. Really appreciate all that you've contributed to the city and our community. We also have Steve Boggs. His term expired in December twenty twenty-one and and started this time on January twenty eighteen. I believe that Steve has served for sixteen years on the planning commission during his volunteer service with the city. So thank you, Steve. We really appreciate all you've done and contributed. Your experience will be greatly missed, but thank you. And then last but not least, Lindy Young, we have an certificate of appreciation. She served on the Flometh Park Advisory Board from October twenty fourteen through December twenty twenty-one. We want to thank Lindsay or Lindy for all that you've done. Really appreciate you. And with that, I believe that I'm guessing that Chris or Ruth have figured out who the top two choices are. And I, and I'm just going to add here that clearly we have some great candidates and unfortunately, only one person can be selected. It's all those spots we have available. This means not, the result of this vote means nothing regarding the amount we would value the service that you'd be able to provide to us. But thank you. Ruth?
I will say that it was a, it was a split vote and Darlene and Michael have the most votes at this point.
Okay.
But it was very close.
Okay, with that, Jeff, I really do appreciate your application and the fact that you put the effort in to be here tonight and to join us. But thank you for being willing to serve the community. I hope that you'll consider serving in the, in the future as well. So with that, councilman asks that you submit an email with your preference over Darlene or Michael, which is, which one gets your top point vote for serving on the planning commission? And go ahead and just send that email to both Chris and Ruth.
Mayor Jones, while those are coming in, I'll just kind of explain that the benefit of taking the two votes is that whoever selected will have received a majority vote of the council. You know, you can imagine if you've got four or five candidates, you wouldn't necessarily want somebody that got two votes as opposed to one vote to be selected opposed to everybody else. So by, by taking two different votes, you, you ensure that whoever was picked was picked by at least a majority of the city council members. So we go through this process. I know it takes a little bit of time, but I feel like it's the most fair way to make sure that council's inputs reflected in the vote.
I appreciate that clarification. Yes, I was, that point was not something I was actually thinking about on why we're doing this, but except for other than we had discussed it prior. Appreciate that. And Ruth, I'll just let you compile those votes and let me know the result.
I'm just waiting on one vote.
Okay.
It's probably hung up in the stratosphere.
Sure. And I really, I really appreciate the fact that we have so many people that are interested in working with the city and serving as volunteers. It means a lot about people's dedication to the community.
Darlene Rose has a majority.
Mr. Hanson, really appreciate your application and your interest in serving the city tonight. Tonight, we've, it sounds like Darlene has got the top number of votes. So she will, so with that, we have a recommended motion to move, to waive the two-week waiting period and appoint Darlene Rose to the Flometh Planning Commission. Can I get a motion to that? So I have a motion made by Councilor Nielsen. And seconded by Counselor Cosi. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Looks like the motion carries unanimously. So thank you for that, everyone. And welcome to the planning commission, Ms. Rose. Look forward to working with you. With that, we have some applicants to the budget committee and we have we have three open positions after Margie Brown and Noel Cummings have completed their two, first two terms or their terms. And Brian Crocker completed his term and he moved out of the city limits. And we had two applicants, including Christopher McMoran and Kathy Harwood. And then again, they have been invited to join us here this evening and it looks like Chris McMoran, Christopher McMoran is here. And, and we've asked him to go ahead. We've asked the same question to him, but I'm going to first let Chris Workman jump in.
Yeah, just real quick, counsel. So again, we've got three openings to applicants. As noted in the memo, we did receive the application from Kathy Harwood after the official closing date, which I guess you could take that into consideration if we had more people than we had positions. But again, the fact that we had more positions than people applying at this point, just ask you to take that into consideration. And then regardless of the, the vote this evening and selecting the recommendation from staff would be to keep the position posted until we get another application. We could bring that to you at that time. So we'll continue to recruit and ask people, talk to friends and community members and see if we can get one more person to fill that important role. So again, just a couple of considerations. I'll make sure the council is aware of.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Looks like we have Christopher McMoran here this evening. So I'm going to go ahead and ask him to introduce himself and explain why he's interested in serving on the budget committee. And sorry, I just lost it. And why you believe your, what you believe your appointment would add to the budget committee?
Well, yeah, thank you. My name is Christopher McMoran and I have lived in Flometh for almost my entire life, which I recognize is a lot shorter than the lives of most people on this call. But hey, I'm here. I'm twenty-three and I think that's actually part of why I applied because according to, I think, the most recent census data, thirty-four percent of Flometh's residents are under the age of twenty-five. But you really don't see them involved in any of these type of meetings or involved in city government very much at all. So that was a big voice that I thought I could lend to some of the deliberations of the budget committee. You know, I firsthand experienced growing up with Flometh's parks. I went to Flometh schools my whole life. I've, you know, interacted with Flometh police. I've drank Flometh water. And I think that growing up here lends a particular perspective, especially growing up here recently. So that's something I would hope to add. I currently serve on the city's public art ad hoc committee as well as on the Flometh School District Budget Committee. So using some of those experiences to add to this. And then I previously also served on the board and as the chair of the Norman Topping Student Aid Fund during my time at the University of Southern California, which is an endowed fund that provides scholarships and support services to low-income students and folks from underrepresented backgrounds who have demonstrated financial need and a history of community service. So managing the budgets for those programs as well as some of my other board service, I hope would be an asset to the city budget committee. So it would be an honor to get back to the city that I've grown up in.
Excellent. I was going to ask if you go by Christopher or Chris?
I think for the sake of these meetings, I should go by Christopher to avoid confusion with our esteemed city manager.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve either one or both of the applicants as submitted. Counselor Lehman?
Yeah, I moved to approve both the applicants that we have before us to vacancies on the budget committee.
Excellent. So we have a motion made by Counselor Lehman and seconded by Counselor Lo. And, and you want us, Counselor Andrade has a question?
I would like to deliberate. I think we should, I think we should appoint Christopher McMoran and then do the option where we hold on to Kathy's applicant, application and then reopen it to others because there are several people that have, that wanted to apply. But when they found out the deadline passed, they didn't apply. And so it just doesn't seem fair to be able to appoint her when there are others who didn't get that chance.
Thank you for that, Counselor Andrade. Any other comments? So with that, all in favor of passing the motion as stated previously, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. And Counselor Nielsen, did you vote in favor or? I'm sorry, I don't.
You're muted. We can't hear you.
My laptop is dying here. So I moved. So I missed it. That, could you repeat the motion? It was to approve both?
Motion was approved to approve both.
I approve.
Okay. And so motion carries five to two. And next we have.
Excuse me, can I get clarification on that vote again? Because I saw hands. I didn't see hands.
Okay.
I apologize.
It's okay. All in favor of passing the motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. So motion carries four to three. Welcome. And with that, we now have the Park Advisory Board appointments and.
Mayor Jones, I'd like to make a comment on this last vote, please.
On the last vote on Park Advisory Board? Or on the previous vote?
The vote that we just took for the budget committee.
What's your comment?
I, as much as I want to support Kathy Harwood for the budget committee, I have an issue with an application that came in seven days late. I too know individuals who were interested, actually two individuals who were interested in applying but did not do so because the deadline had passed. And I wondered then if next year we're going to allow late deadlines or we're going to make some arbitrary ruling that will allow us to waive the rules. I think it's just not the best precedent and, and we know that there are folks out there that would have applied otherwise. So again, as much as I would, I do support her actually being on the budget committee, it would be a cleaner. I'd like to reconsider this council to reconsider their motion. It would be cleaner if we went back and went through the process and opened it up again for other applicants.
Sure. So there's a motion on table to reconsider. Is that, that's what you stated, correct? Sure. So we have a motion on the table to reconsider. So we, that motion was made by Counselor Bisco and seconded by Counselor Andrade. All in favor of, of the previous motion to carry, the previous motion was to vote the two applicants on. And so we will remake that same vote. All in favor?
I believe you're just going to take a vote on whether to reconsider the motion or not.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Motion is to reconsider. So all in favor of reconsidering the previous vote, please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, all opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. So motion to reconsider passes four to three. So now go ahead and re-vote on the previous motion. Is that correct? Okay. And so all in favor of.
We deliberate.
Oh, yeah, sure. Counselor though?
Just a point of order. Is there an ability to discuss before we vote?
Sure. We can do it now.
So I have a question, just in terms of the posting period, when do we make the announcements that we had vacancies? How long do we allow? And have we made exceptions in the past for people that have come in late where we haven't had enough applicants?
Yeah, so Ruth is, I'm sure looking at the calendar, seeing when these actually are posted, looking at the website, but they've been out for several weeks now, I would say. We can get you the exact date of when this got posted. But I can say in fairly recent past, the council has approved applications that came in, you know, a day or two or three after the deadline. I, I don't know. We've had this exact situation where it was this committee and there was one application and there was two openings still to go back and check the history on it. But the city council has approved late applications in the past, I believe as recent as last year.
I remember us voting on one of these late applicants and before you jump in, I'm going to go ahead and offer someone else, anybody else to have a comment? Or Counselor Lo goes again? Counselor Lo?
Feel a little bit handicapped here not knowing the circumstances of why the other individuals weren't encouraged to apply or didn't apply. I'm presuming or hoping that, that everyone had the notice through the channels that we use that there's a vacancy. And the, to, to hear that folks haven't applied because they didn't, for whatever reason, it seems like it's coming up pretty late. So maybe.
Yeah, it's been advertised in the city's newsletter. It's been on the city's website. I believe Ruth is included and she can correct me if I'm wrong on that. The, the weekly meeting notice that she gives, there was notification given there. So we, we've used all the channels that are typically used for recruiting folks. I, I know that there were, you know, any number of ways that people found out about the positions and applied for it. I, I can't tell you why people that expressed interest in applying didn't express that interest till after the deadline had passed. I'm not sure what that would, I'm, I'm not sure where they found out about it. If the deadline had closed already, I guess, I'm in the same areas, but we're pretty clear on when the deadline was.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Bisco?
Right. So I can't speak to why folks may have applied or not applied. I just know that I, last year's was, not last year, the year before was on the thirtieth. I actually thought the deadline was on the thirtieth. For whatever reason, it was not. It was on the twenty-ninth this year. It's a holiday season. People get busy and they get caught off guard by that deadline. I do know that we can ask the same question. So why did Kathy Harwood wait to apply until April or till January fifth? And I guess the point is just making sure that we have equitable access to these positions. It's not a matter of whether or not she's qualified. I think she is. But if we are going to allow one late application, then we all ought to allow that same opportunity to others who might have applied on the thirtieth or the thirty-first, which is when I was communicated or somebody asked me about it. But we did not, they did not apply because the deadline had passed. So if it's a deadline, it's a deadline. If it's not a deadline, then then we have a different policy.
And I'll just ask, Chris, I can't remember, was there some potential for, oh, yeah, we haven't gotten to this yet, but we're hoping to call a budget committee meeting. We're hoping to call a budget committee meeting in the next couple of weeks or few weeks to discuss ARPA fund spending, is that correct?
Yeah, that's if the agenda was to meet in, not a couple of weeks, to be at the February work session, I believe. Or a separate day in February.
So before the next council meeting or after?
Oh, I think we said.
Sorry, Chris, what'd you say?
I don't have the number for me, Counsel Andrade, did you have that?
It's the 28th, that's on the agenda item summary.
Got it.
Fourth, fourth Monday of. Fourth Monday.
So there wouldn't necessarily be a, an impact to that schedule if we just postponed that?
No, I'm just looking at the calendar, we could go, if you wanted to bring names back to the next council meeting. If we had that by February 4th, that's a Friday. Uh, we have a couple of days to put it together and pack it's got on Wednesday the 9th.
Okay, thank you. Counsel though?
Given that we still have one vacancy, um, and from the. I think uh, good arguments really for, for this, can we reopen the application? Period, as I mean, Chris said, but it seems to me that would make sense, that it, I don't know, for a week or however long would be appropriate and. Folks know of others that would be interested in applying and certainly prompt that.
So I'll make a motion that we approve Chris McMoran. Um, at this time and that we hold open the two vacancies and um. Until a deadline that is appropriate.
Mayor Jones, there's a.
Point of order, there's a motion on the table.
Oh, there is?
Table is to, there was a vote to reconsider the motion to. Approve uh, Mr. McMoran and Ms. Harwood, that motion needs to be reconsidered.
Like that we voted on that, okay, sorry.
We voted to revote, but we didn't revote.
Okay. Yeah. So the motion on table is to carry or to uh. Approve both applicants as presented. Um, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, uh, looks like the motion fails unanimously. So can I get another motion?
I move to approve Christopher McMoran be appointed to the budget committee. And that the city reopens the application process for the two remaining openings for a two-week period.
Okay. So the second one. Okay, great, so we have a motion made by Counsel Lehman, seconded by Counsel Lo. And so the deadline would be on the 24th of January. So therefore, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Looks like the motion carries unanimously, and I hope that you will express to Ms. Harwood that it's not a. It's not because we're not interested in her serving, uh, it's just an issue of equity at this point. Um, Counsel Bisco, I see that your hand is up, but I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna move forward with this next agenda item at this point. So we have a park advisory board openings as well, we have three openings. And we have applications. Uh, by Izzy, I'm sorry, Izzy Elliott and Yvonne McMillan. Park Advisory Board's a little bit different in that the mayor makes an appointment and the council confirms that appointment. And because we don't have additional applicants, my recommendation is based on information that I have received. That Lynda Young would be potentially willing to serve, on continue serving on the Parker Advisory Board. And so my recommendation is that we actually. Go ahead and approve Izzy and Yvonne's to serve on the Parker Advisory Board and that we invite. Yeah, Lynda Young to continue her serving, her service onto the Parker Advisory Board. So that's my recommendation, staff has not invited her to do so yet, we wanted to at least get the council to approve before we went out and sent out that invitation. And so I'm looking for a motion to approve them, my appointments to the Parker Advisory Board as presented. Is there a motion? Uh, motion made by Counsel Kazi. And second by Counsel Nielsen. Uh, Counsel Bisco, you have a question, comment?
Well, yes, now I have two. The first one was my recommendation, when you didn't acknowledge my hand, was only to say that we could actually. If it was appropriate and the council felt it was helpful, we could vote on those new applicants for the budget committee on the 24th meeting. That was my comment that you did not call me on. My second comment now is. That our term limits for the Park Advisory Board. Members.
What's the question?
Are there limits of service to the Park Advisory Board service?
Chris?
Yeah, it's limited to two, two terms back to back, uh, following which you can't apply again, but you can be appointed if there aren't any other applicants. Which is a situation we find ourselves in with, um, with Lynda Young. I will say she's. She's not made the request, but she has shown an interest in continuing to attend.
Park Advisory Board are two-year or three-year terms.
Three-year terms.
And I have no problem with Lynda Young, I think she does a great job, so I was just looking for clarification, thank you.
Thank you. That's on Dotty.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I, I don't either, I, Lynda does a great job, but in light of our last vote. And since we're opening up the applications, I wasn't sure if we wanted to open up the application again. Uh, so then we'll have the two budget committee applicant, or spots available. And then one park advisory board, and then if we don't get any, then um, invite Lynda. I would be interested in that.
Appreciate that. I'm a little less interested in that, I think that we have someone who's interested right now, she's expressed an interest. I'd like to just, personally, I prefer just to. Invite her to submit, since we have had these open for a month, um, or close to a month, but that's just my preference. Uh, Chris, and that would be, that would be consistent with city policy, it's written in that if, that someone could be invited. To join, Chris?
Yeah, I was just gonna add the, uh, I guess the distinction between this and budget committee is that. Lynda hasn't submitted a late application, she just hasn't submitted an application, which is a little different situation.
Okay, so all in favor of um, confirming my appointments to Parker Advisory Board, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. So Counsel Andrade and Bisco, are you abstaining? Okay, so we have motion carries five to zero, um, with two extensions.
And Mayor Jones, if I could just get some clarification, if, if Ms. Young isn't interested in serving or being appointed. As counsel want to go and open that appointment up for the same timeframe as the budget committee position.
Yes, I would, that sounds great.
Could ask for clarification.
Yes.
Um, I understood that the uh. Period was to be reopened on the budget committee for a two-week period, and I heard January 24th. Is that, um, I, I just want to confirm absolutely that it's five o'clock PM on January 24th will be the deadline.
I think it could be midnight.
Well, and, and the reason I, I make that point is Counsel Bisco's comment or suggestion. Uh, to consider those at the January 24th City Council meeting. It kind of runs afoul of that, I mean, it's difficult to have a deadline at five o'clock and then consider later that evening.
I think that we consider it the following meeting in February.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or your other alternative would be five o'clock PM on Friday, the. Back me up, 21st?
The 4th, or yeah, the 21st is, yeah, to get it in the council packet ahead of time, it'd have to be that Wednesday, which is only a week and a couple of days, so. I'd recommend keep it the 24th midnight and um. We'll address it in February.
That sounds good. Um, so it is 10 o'clock and I do want to uh, respect the council's. Um, wishes here, I'm gonna propose that we uh, continue on, that we make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion that we. Uh, continue our meeting until 10:30 PM. Um, and I would welcome a second. So we have a motion made by myself and seconded by Counsel Lo. And we just have some important business that I'd like to see get done, but uh, all in favor of continuing the meeting, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. So we have a motion carries five to two. Thanks for that. Um, with that, we have this conversation about the Samaritan Awards and.
Mayor, can I, can I make a recommendation that we move to um, other, the ordinances and resolutions and then come back up to new business items if, if there's time?
Sure, that's fine, happy to do that. And so I'm gonna first. Go to ordinance 860, amending the council rules for the first reading. Uh, Counsel Brewer?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is ordinance number 860, an ordinance amending along with municipal code. Chapter 2.10, council rules.
And, thank you. And. Uh, can I get a motion to?
Just any deliberation and then a roll call vote from the city.
Okay, any deliberation on the council rules, Counsel Andrade?
Um, I just wanted to double check something, on page three of 10, on um, line seven. In line 14, uh, I wasn't sure if those were the same thing. Uh, line seven says public hearings and associated ordinances or resolutions. And then 14 is ordinances and resolutions, or is it just like other resolutions that don't involve public hearings? Second readings. I guess like this, that makes sense. I wrote that note before the meeting.
Counsel Bisco?
So I do not have the page up, I just know that it's under decorum and I can't find this page fast enough on my computer. Um, but it talks about council decorum and it talks about the council interaction with, I believe, staff. Um, and maybe the public, but I would like to add um, council interaction with council. As part of that decorum statement, I, I just simply cannot pull it up fast enough, the packet is pretty sizable and I'm trying to get to it online, so if somebody.
I think you're looking at page uh, seven. Uh, carry over to page eight. Uh, line 44, 45 on page seven and one and two on page eight.
Yeah, that's correct.
And so you're suggesting that the city attorney also be added to that list, is that what I'm hearing?
No, what I said was that the council be added to that list, so a council to council engagement, be added to the list of decorum. Included in that behavior. And again, if I can get to the page, I'll read it to you, but I'm just. It's not scrolling fast enough to get there.
I. If that is not already in there, I would be, I would also agree that that would be good.
Might I note, um, number two right above it?
That's what I thought. Yeah, I do believe that number two does address that concern.
Hmm, I disagree.
Yeah, so you guys want to call it out in number three?
Sure.
So uh, a- as a suggestion, that could be amended to read. The counselor and mayor shall, when addressing staff or the public, or each other. Can find themselves to question your issues, then in our discussion, shall not engage in personal attacks, shall not impugn the motives. Of any speaker shall at all times, uh, while in session or otherwise, conduct themselves in a manner appropriate to the dignity of their office.
Sounds like a fine amendment to me. Can I get a thumbs up from everybody and that you agreed to that?
Wish Pragya a, a motion and.
Yeah, motion.
Amen in the ordinance.
So we have a motion to amend. On the council rules on page seven of 10, line 44, to add. After the word public. Or each other.
May I request that the first or be deleted, so it would read, when addressing staff, comma, the public, comma, or each other?
Sounds great. So we have a motion made by Counsel Bisco, seconded by Counsel Lehman. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Counselor Andrade, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that any gendered language in here be changed to uh, non-gendered. Non-binary, so use, instead of him slash herself, do themself. I don't know if I can make that broad of a, of a motion, okay, cool. That is my motion.
So we have a motion made by Counsel Andrade and seconded by Counsel Bisco. But do you want to speak to that motion, Counsel Andrade?
Yeah, just that um, not everyone identifies as he or she. And I think it's important that we. Don't alienate people and, you know, it's, it's, it's all about accepting others and um. Yeah, I guess.
Thank you.
It's just the right thing to do.
Thank you, and Counsel Nielsen, you have a comment?
Could, could we just make the non-binary an option, so those that, that do address themselves as he or she not be excluded? Could we make?
Well, it's just like themself, like, oh, that person over there, they were doing this thing, we use they anyway. Um, to refer to individuals. So, I mean, I always use themself in, in a third, like, in this way, when I write. I, and when I speak, and I, I would assume that most people would as well. I, I still stand by my motion.
Okay, all in favor of passing the motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, all opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Any extensions? And so motion carries five to one with one extension. So with that. We have a motion to approve the council rules as amended.
No more amendments and there's just a roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Counsel Bisco?
Uh, yes.
Kazi?
Yes.
Sorry, Counsel Lehman?
Yes.
Counsel Lo?
Yes.
Counsel Nielsen? Counsel Nielsen, no. Counsel Andrade?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes. Great, well, thank you. Um, so that will come back with a second reading, uh, since it did not pass unanimously. With that, we have ordinance 861. And uh, for the first reading.
This is ordinance 861, an ordinance repealing along with municipal code chapter 13.40. Storm sewer utility and enacting along with municipal code chapter 13.40. Stormwater utility and chapter 13.45, stormwater management program and declaring an emergency.
Okay, and we passed that with a, we moved forward with a roll call vote on that. Counsel Kazi has a comment?
Yeah.
And question, what is the basis for the emergency?
Really, it's to have an effective date that's immediate, which is what we kind of need for, uh, to come into compliance with uh. uh, to come into compliance with uh, the permit uh, needs of the city.
Thank you.
We're a little, we're a little late on it.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Um, all, so we go ahead, we go have a roll call vote.
Counsel Bisco?
Yes.
Counsel Kazi?
Yes.
Counsel Lehman?
Yes.
Counsel Low?
Yes.
Counsel Nielsen?
Yes.
Counsel Andrade?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes. Great. And we now have a resolution twenty-two oh-two uh, approving the twenty-twenty-two system development charges rate schedule. And Chris, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so just again in the memo, uh, we look at the NR, uh, all of our STCs are indexed towards the the ENR, uh, which run up three-point-zero-five percent. So we've just done a three-point-five-zero percent increase to our STC fee schedule, which has been provided. Uh, that'll be effective as of passes of the resolution. I'll just note in here, I'll put it to the memo, we are looking at an update to the stormwater methodology or the stormwater master plan right now. And depending on what that project list looks like, we'll probably within the next, I don't know, six months or so, we'll probably be updating that stormwater methodology and need to update the, the STC fee. Um, at that time, but uh, for now, this keeps us on pace with the construction cost increases.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of passing or I'm sorry, I'm looking for a motion, past resolution twenty-two oh-two establishing the twenty-twenty-two STC rates as proposed. We have a motion made by Counsel Nielsen. Seconded by Counsel Kazi. All in favor of passing the motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Great. Chris, you just want to speak to the ARPA funds?
I can. So this is uh, gen item F-seven. Um, we've had some just back and forth uh, references to the ARPA funds. We've not had an opportunity to meet as counsel. And to talk about this, so recommendation is to just get a date set on the calendar or where we can bring some ideas. I'll have some information comes out prior to that meeting, some recommendations from staff, things to consider. Um, some guidance on new guidance that's come out here recently, even as of this week, um, that tweaks things a little bit. So I'm just looking to get that date set on the calendar with the council.
Great, thank you. So I'm looking for a motion. If anyone has a preference there. I'll make a motion to schedule a special meeting of the Budget Committee on February twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-two at five PM to review recommendations for spending ARPA funds or not. Uh, some motion made by myself and seconded by Counsel Low. Um, and a comment by Counsel Andrade.
So I, I'd like to know more about what we intend to do with discussions of ARPA funds. I, I'm concerned that we haven't been having conversations about this, even just brainstorming. Or um, advertising to the public uh, to, you know, ask them for their ideas. I uh, there have been a lot of um projects that have happened already across the country. And I know that we have a lot going on and we don't necessarily, didn't, wouldn't necessarily have spent money on anything yet, but it's really important to plan these things. And I just want to make sure that we're going to have enough um community input and reach as many people as possible. So um, could, could staff speak to that? Please?
Chris?
Yeah, this is a first meeting. So this is a brainstorming session. Uh, talk about ideas, things people have seen, projects they've seen other places, uh, things they're looking at for Philomath. And then the hope would be to come away with some uh, recommendations from the, the Budget Committee. Uh, you want to put out some surveys to the public, we can do that. If you want to reach out to stakeholders, we can do that. So like this is really a, a, an initial meeting. So no real decisions to be made other than how do we want to proceed? But finding the best way to spend these ARPA funds.
So follow-up question to that.
Wait, um, let's go ahead and have Counsel Bisco uh, put our rules modification, go ahead and have Counsel Bisco ask question and any other one person first. Counsel Bisco?
Uh, I just wanted clarification if there would be public comment allowed at that meeting for this. Would we be accepting public comment is my question?
Um, I didn't really foresee that. I think it'd be good to hear from the Budget Committee, maybe put some parameters on things that we're wanting to consider. But I'm open to direction from the council, but my initial thought was no, this would be me in the Budget Committee to explain. These are ARPA funds. Here's what they can be used for. What are some things within existing or past or future budgets that you foresee being helpful? And then what additional information do you need from the public to help make decisions was kind of how I was framing it more. My experience would be if you open up something like this too broadly to too many people too early. Um, you'll get so much information of such varying degree, it'll be hard to kind of sort and filter through it, but I'm, I'm game, whatever the council wants to do.
And Chris, is there an opportunity to have a public hearing on this topic at some point?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think that'd be part of the discussion at this meeting would be what kind of outreach do we want to do to the community? Um, to get that feedback and get that input. I, I don't know, I would lead with that, but I think that could be part of more of a comprehensive um, outreach uh, to determine what would be needed. Yeah, I, I think at least one public hearing, if not more.
Great, thank you. Any other comments before we get to Counsel Andrade? Uh, Counsel Andrade?
That's exciting to hear. I didn't, the way it was phrased on here, it kind of sounded like um this was that we wouldn't have as much uh, um, as many meetings and such. Um, but regarding outreach. Uh, what was it? Oh. So would, is, is there any plans to do the outreach before the meeting then? To like let people know that, hey, we're gonna be talking about this. You might want to tune into the Budget Committee meeting to learn about like what we can use these funds for and um, so that you can have ideas to give to us?
Yeah, whatever. I mean, we'll advertise the meeting as a meeting of the Budget Committee. We'll put the topic on there. I don't know that I was planning to do any additional outreach until the committee had met and decided what outreach they wanted to do.
Okay, um, I, I think it would be nice to have like a, a special one like for the area-wide plan and for the streetscapes and such, if possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So all in favor of the motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Okay, and all opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Uh, in the extensions, oh wait, we have a no vote for Counsel Lehman. Uh, so uh, motion carries uh, six to one. And um with that, we have the Samaritan Awards. Um, that I'm really excited about. I think this is a great program that we have locally where we celebrate our local citizens and offer awards and uh Chris, do you want to introduce this topic and kind of talk us through the process of what we're trying to accomplish and and what the purpose of the rewards are?
Yeah, I think the letter from the chamber does a good job of this. So hopefully everybody had a chance to read through that. I know it's towards the bottom of this uh, volume here, but uh, the intent is for each individual organization to identify their volunteer of the year for just that organization. And so those are your Samaritan Award winners. And then there's also a first citizen award, which is more of a community-wide award. And any organization can nominate individuals or the business nonprofit for that award. So there's a a junior first citizen, first citizen, a senior first citizen, and then first citizen business or nonprofit entity. So the city, as a city, we want to select our city volunteer of the year to be our Samaritan Award winner for on behalf of the city. And then we can submit any names that the City Council would like. And especially if you'd like to help do the write-up, uh, be happy to take considerations for first citizen nominees that the city um, could present um, to be considered at large.
Yeah, and so this is really an honor, you know. We are going to select one person for each of these categories if we have nominees. But in my mind, it's an honor just to be nominated by the council. Um, and I don't think that there's any shame in being nominated and then having someone else be voted for the council to recommend for that. So a person, I believe, is just an honor to be nominated by the council. So just wanted to offer that um, perspective. So with that, um, I am wondering if anyone has any nominations for junior first citizen specifically? And Counsel Bisco, your hand is up. Are you, do you have a nomination for a junior first citizen?
No, Mayor, but I'd really like to know why you will not just allow me to ask a question that benefits the entire council on the ARPA
Sorry.
Question.
We have
Not, not, sorry, it's just a simple question. I'm not sure why we're not allowed to
You can ask that question when we get to council reports. So thank you.
It's not a council report.
That's when you have the opportunity to speak.
So I would be violating the
Order, you're out of order. And we are going to move forward. We've already moved forward, so you're out of order. I'm gonna go ahead and ask you to pause or we'll take a break. Okay, we're gonna take a two-minute break, everyone, and we'll be back at ten twenty-five.